Okay, this presentation is going to be by Animal Refuge Flagler, ARF. ARF, that's so cool.
ARF, hi. I'm Wendy Tramarchi. I will be presenting today in Cam Orr, who was going.
Yeah, pull the mic closer, please.
Cameron Orr, who is going to be presenting, was, had an unbreakable last-minute commitment, so I'm filling in for him today.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Animal Refuge Flagler, about us. Fellow community members with common goals, organized to work together to create safe, compassionate, fiscally responsible treatment and sheltering of our community animals. We are all striving for better welfare of shelter animals in our community. Concerned citizens began addressing the Palm Coast County City Commission and the Flagler Board of County Commissioners about multiple issues at Flagler Humane Society in the late spring of 2024. We are only one of 13 counties in Florida to not operate a municipal shelter out of 67. Palm Coast, Flagler Beach, Bonnell, and the county spent over $416,000 in fiscal year 2024 with this private organization, where there has been little to no oversight or insight or oversight. Flagler County, $284,000, Palm Coast, $90,000, Bonnell, $26,000, and Flagler Beach, $16,000. A joint city council workshop on animal sheltering in the county with FHS was conducted on the 28th of August, 2024, resulting in widely conflicting data: cost to build, cost to operate, number of staff required to operate. In November 24, Palm Coast officials requested that ARF collect and document data from existing municipal shelters around the state. A report on our findings was submitted to Palm Coast, and Flagler County officials was submitted on the 8th of December 24. Our long-term goal: increased number of adequately sized kennel spaces for shelter animals, reduce euthanasia, provide professional, timely care for sick and injured animals, operational excellence in all aspects of animal care, detail visibility into taxpayer spending. We would love to establish a second municipal shelter for our community, making two, because as of right now, with our growing community, we only have one source for our animals to Their motivations balance the motivations balance needs of our growing community while managing within fiscal realities. These are a list of our resources, including University of Florida Vet School, local animal welfare advocates, other county municipal shelter directors who have been wonderful in answering all our questions, and so on. Our needs: public awareness of the needs of this county and its animals, and awareness to the city and county officials. Constituents and allies, our opponents, those who see a second shelter as a threat. As one of 13 shelters, 13 counties that only have one shelter, most of them are very, very small. With a population of this size, you cannot have one shelter. If something happens, an emergency, anything, or, as they were talking today, they could just back out and say, "We're done." Where are our animals going? Tactics: we visited municipal shelters around the state, collected and compiled relevant data, briefed data findings to the municipal officials. Visited shelter population and wealth comparison. So, there are Sumter and our county that are similar in their per capita income. Sumter and Flagler also have a similar population. Percentage of the general fund for animal sheltering in Sumter is 1.2% or 2.3% of their $188 million general fund. We only give, here in Flagler County, .25%. That's only .4% of 155 of the general fund for animal sheltering. We are the lowest. I mean, even, even small counties that have very little income give more than we do. Summary comparison for kennels: 68 kennels, 108 kennels, 110 to 80. Lake, which is a much bigger county, of course, has more, 160 dog, 140 cat. Brevard County, 70. Putnam County has 54 kennels. We have 56. But Putnam County is now opening a new shelter, $1.6 million, with, I believe, close to 100 more kennels in that shelter opening, I think, the end of this month or beginning of March. What are we doing? They keep talking about, FHS keeps talking about, "We're going to have a plan," or, "We have no plan, we have no space, we have no money." Well, why wasn't a strategic plan done long before we started complaining about that shelter? Now they're saying, "Yes, but where is it?" They've had months to do that. Out of 56 kennels, we have 40 employees, 40. All the others have 18, 30, 32, with much bigger space, much more kennels. Why does it require 40 when everybody else is so much less? Yes, they say they have a vet. One day a week, he's contracted. That's when he's there, one day a week, on Thursdays, I believe. So, dogs go many days without vet care. FHS statements versus ARF visits. FHS stated, "The cost of a new shelter would be $80 to $100 million." That in Orange County, yes, but not here. Facts found by ARF visits: Citrus, $12 million; Lake, $9 million; Clay, $21 million; Putnam, $1.6 million, and added many kennels in that $1.6 million. And, and they are, they don't have the money that this county has. FHS stated, "The annual cost to operate the shelter would be at least $6 million." Facts found during ARF visits: all with more kennel space. In no case did the annual operating budget exceed $4.8, and that was one of the very large kennels. $4.8 million average was approximately $2.5 million, nowhere near the six. FHS operates 56 kennels with 40 personnel. Brevard and Putnam budget 18 personnel positions, actually 13, but that's what was budgeted, 18. 25% more kennels than we have. In no case did operating personnel exceed 30, three times the number of kennels. FHS statement: "No true background checks are performed, nor are there any pre-hire or random drug tests for employees or volunteers. Most municipal shelters visited require both." Animal Welfare and Flagler, other facts and issues. At the 28th of August joint city-county meeting, the private shelter stated that there were no plans, no money, no land for expansion, despite there being near 100% overcapacity for long periods of time. That was their words at that meeting. Anyone can go back and listen to those minutes on YouTube. FHS has low ratings on Charity Navigator, two of four stars, four, lack of financial visibility, and we have backup charts for that that you've all been given. Staffing numbers at FHS appear to show considerable inefficiency when compared to visited shelters and more kennels. FHS appears to not universally follow posted policies and procedures. Several instances of substandard animal care at FHS have been identified and reported. FHS has had six board of director resignations or term non-renewals in four years. Despite a conflict of interest clause in the board of directors handbook, four of six current board of director members are married couples. ARF recommendations: The city of Palm Coast has grown by three times and the county over two times since the creation of Flagler Humane Society. Not a single new kennel has been constructed in Flagler County in over 22 years. The city of Palm Coast and Flagler County have found themselves in a sole-source position, as you heard today, you are, they are it. Regarding animal sheltering: Cooperative competition breeds operational excellence. There needs to be more than one shelter. This is an urgent issue. Plans and funding for second municipal shelter are needed now. All of the counties in the state, including one that I'm on a board of for the last 10 years, are asking, and where I am, in Indian River County, we have a couple of other larger-sized nonprofit rescues, and we are going to be asking our county to open their own city shelter for animals, for hoarding animals in bite cases, those kind of things. We're going to be asking soon our county to do the same, because it's hard to handle those kind of animals, it's hard to handle when we're full, like most shelters right now. Most shelters have a strategic plan. This one should. Thank you, and thank you, I'm sorry that Cam couldn't be here.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Step, if you want, you can step up to the podium. Any questions or comments from the DIAS?
So, thank you, and I hope Cameron's okay, and I want to thank him for all the work that he's done as well. What I get from this presentation is the same thing that I expressed previously. I think that monies are not being handled the most efficient way possible. It seems from this data, and I have no reason to think that this is incorrect data, I know you all have worked very hard, it seems that other shelters are operating much more efficiently than our shelter is operating, and operating with larger capacity as well. So, again, you know, we don't have the ability to tell the Humane Society how to operate, they're a private entity, obviously, but we do have the ability to find an alternative. Whether that's short-term, long-term, whatever that looks like, I'm not sure, but I think we need to really take a hard look at what our Humane Society is doing, how they're operating, how our tax dollars are being spent versus what some of these surrounding counties, some of which are very comparable to us, what they're able to do. I'm incredibly disturbed that there's been no plan for expansion of our Humane Society. I don't know that if a lot of the folks that are here today and that have been bringing up their own private concerns to us over the last several months, whether or not we'd even have a plan moving at this point from the Flagler Humane Society. If these folks had not piped up and said, "Hey, we have some concerns," how long would this be going on without there being a plan for expansion put in place? Again, you know, I look at the numbers from the last presentation, and the number, I'm actually surprised with the amount of growth that our county has had, I'm surprised that the number of intakes has not also exponentially increased, but I do think that that's due to people like Caroline Johnson, Nick DeSantis, people in our community who have stepped up, Community Cats, you know, these other organizations who have also stepped in to help, and I thank all of you for that. So, you know, I think we need to really take a hard look at how we're spending our tax dollars, whether or not there are some legitimate alternatives, and I don't know if that looks like another workshop from our staff, if that looks like a joint county-city workshop just based, you know, just to address this very issue, that doesn't encompass other things. So, I don't know, I look to my colleagues for any suggestions, and maybe we have a follow-up, but I think we need to find an alternative way to better spend our tax dollars.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Gabbaro?
I agree, all options should be on the table.
Yes, sir. You have a follow-up, Councilman Miller?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so I fully agree. You know, just on the basis of financials, this is not operating the way it should and providing the services it should, and I also agree that the numbers were surprising, and I feel that that gap is being filled by other individuals and organizations. I had one question about, in this, the general fund, the percent general fund slide, it mentions .4% of 155. Is that the county general fund, is that what we're talking about, or are we combining multiple general funds? I'm not sure if you have the answer to that question.
That's a ham answer, because she put this, this particular one together, and I can have him send that answer back to you.
I think it's both.
Yeah, I think so, too.
It's combined.
And I'll have, I'll have him send it back, and any other questions that I can't answer to make sure that that's the correct answer.
And I, I express this to Mr. Orr, I would love to go see what Putnam is doing, because it appears that they've found, you know, obviously with funding being a challenging issue always, but in particular, I think we're dealing with a lot of different things right now, the interest of trying to find an efficient way to handle this problem, and it appears that they're, you know, I'm not sure what those facilities look like, but it appears that they've found a way to service a lot of, a lot of animals with less money.
They have, they have, and there are less expensive ways to doing it. There are less, and in your packages that have been sent previously, we have things for you there, there's pictures that we have not submitted because we didn't want the audience to be a part of that.
Right.
But we do have a lot of costs and facts and figures in the package that I did not present today, that you all should have gotten.
Thank you. Yeah, and to your point, I think it's something that we have to bring to joint cities, counties, because obviously, we're talking about the, the end user of these services, the county and the city of Palm Coast are the two big players, the other communities also as well, but not, not to the same extent. So, I think to get something done, we'd have to work with the county properly.
May I ask, City Manager, when is our contract discussion coming back? Our contract with the Flagler Humane Society?
Well, we as staff would work with them on reviewing any red-line version of things that they want to change or that we would want to change. It doesn't end until September 30th, so I targeted sometime this summer, because it'll also have, depending on the outcome, will have budgetary impacts, so want to get to, get that to you this summer.
Okay, so, I mean, we are on a timeline then, because if, in my opinion, if we don't see some, I think, more transparency, at the very least, give us your bylaws, and some, a plan to be more, I think, fiscally responsible and to have a plan for expansion that's acceptable to this board, to the county, to the community, then do we even renew the contract? I don't know what else we would do with the animals, so that's the problem. So, do we renew it for only a year and then put into place another alternative? I don't know yet what that looks like, but I think that if we're going to get ahead of this before the contract expires, we need to come up with a plan here pretty quickly.
So, I mean, our county partners are in the room for another topic, but we can work with them to possibly schedule something in April. We already have the joint city-county meeting next week for the sheriff's office, so want to also just give us some time to meet with their staff and also the Humane Society.
Perfect.
So, we'll target April.
I would, to your point, Vice Mayor, I would, I would like to see alternatives, right? You know, what are our options? Because to me, it appears that we, we don't have a lot of options right now until we develop them with another shelter. So, I'd like to see if, worst-case scenario, if we don't renew this contract, where, how do we provide those services? What do we do? So that we know what the alternatives to this are to make those decisions.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman, Vice Mayor. City Manager, yeah, if you can coordinate that so we can have a sit-down, and maybe Ms. Patito can mention something when she comes up, we can have a little bit of a discussion with her before her next topic. Okay, thank you, ma'am. We will open it up for public comment. If there's nothing else from the DIAS. Any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Anne Thompson, I just want to state that last year, our organization did send out written emails and letters to every single board member with our complaints and concerns about the Flagler Humane Society. We did not receive one response. I just wanted to say that in regards to the woman that said that, you know, we need to put these things in writing. I just wanted to let you know that we have attempted to do that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sure you have it all on file.
I do.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
I'm one of the board members she sent it to, and we make a practice.
Could you please state your name for the record?
I'm one of the board members she sent it to, I'm just responding.
State your name for the record, please.
Her letter. Linda Lester.
Okay, thank you.
One of the married board, board members, by the way. We don't respond to those kind of accusations, everything, we trust and hired Amy, and we feel sufficient to support her, and any complaints, go to Amy and she handles them. We, as the board, are not involved in day-to-day operations of the shelter, nor should we be, nor should any board. But I want to make a couple of comments about the presentation. It showed that the shelter, I believe, had 40 employees, is that what you had?
That's what was said in my.
Okay. Of those 40 employees, nine of those are thrift store employees, they're not at the shelter at all, and most of the other ones are part-time. So, that wasn't clear in the number 40, that nine of them are thrift store, and a lot of them are part-timers. It's not true that we only have a vet one day a week. We have vets typically five days a week. One of them is there three days, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We usually have another vet, two other part-time vets that come in on the other days. You talked about the lack of, the lack of increase, animal increase from 2014 to 2024, and you attributed it to people like Caroline, who does a great job, and Community Cats, but the numbers haven't changed. Caroline's not been doing that for the last eight or nine years, and if you look back at the numbers, those numbers haven't increased prior to when these other rescue groups came into the community. So, I don't think you can contribute in its entirety, the lack of increase. I think you have to give some credit to the Humane Society for the programs that we've implemented to keep pets in their homes before they ever get into the shelter. And I think the $6 million figure was not what we were anticipating, the $6 million figure in the presentation to operate a shelter was not to operate our shelter, but a bigger shelter, where we were talking about Orange County. Our shelter runs at significantly less dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is John Reynolds, I'm also a board member. I'll do the best I can, I'm not creating public speaking. Just some of the notes I've been making, Flagler Humane Society will work with other groups, that when the other groups stop bashing everything, will be happy to work with people. It's not about trying to be the privatization of the only group in the area. One thing that was brought up, we do have a vet that's on full-time, and we have full-time medical staff as well, so it's continual medical people, not just one vet, one day a week. We have other vets that volunteer their time as well, that have been retired in the fields. It's not always about the extra kennels, it's about the programs that are being produced. We have a program that we started about a year and a half ago, someone went to, volunteered his own time, went to class, learned how to take care of aggressive animals. We've taken our area in the back that's been fenced in for years to deal with the dogs, and he's training these dogs to work and play with each other, play better with people, understand if they're aggressive, that they can be calmed down and not just always be aggressive and be put down as this other group thinks they're doing because they're aggressive. The numbers show the county is growing, but our numbers aren't growing because of our programs we have in place, that has a lot to do with the growth. I don't, this other group may be taking up some of the slack, but not in the numbers, as Linda said, for the last eight or nine years that we've seen state. Yes, we do have money in the savings account and investments, but as any large group of city, public people, the general, you budget and you save money for future growth, for future changes. You don't just work on a day-to-day basis, you have to grow. City has money in their, money in their funds to just sit and wait until you need some capital expansion, something like that. Growth plans have been started, it's a slow process, you don't just jump into it and say, as I think you said, you have to know where your money's going and coming from, and look at all your numbers together before you can make your changes and grow. Last thing I'm going to say is, how will ARF or SMART, if they do make another facility, going to deal with the aggressive dogs, the diseased dogs and things like that? That's not something I saw that they were going to do in their growth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, again, Vincent Lyon. I am a board member, like the last two speakers, but I'm also a homeowner, small business owner, and resident of Palm Coast, and I know that you, as a board, have very, you have a responsibility to the city. So, as, as a resident and homeowner in the city, I think the board's going to have to ask the question, what is the best return for your investment? Is it going to be to increase your support to the existing society, or to go and invest in a whole new, you know, buy land, buy property, involve, you know, all of that issues of maintaining a municipal facility? As a resident, I don't think that that's the best way to spend the money. I think if you have issues with the way the Flagler Humane Society is operated, those can be worked with and addressed, and that greater support for the Humane Society will help with whatever issues that you think are an issue with growth. From the presentation, one thing that was not mentioned also was the number of charities that have disappeared in the meantime. Safari is no longer here, Flagler Cats is no longer here, there were other rescues. I believe that the facility, the ones that came up, and including Community Cats, which I've been a volunteer for, for years, are filling the gap left by those failed societies. They're not relieving any of the stress on the Flagler Humane Society. Flagler Humane Society's numbers have, intake numbers have not changed because of the efforts to keep people with their animals. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm not sure if I can or I can't, because I wasn't supposed to present.
We'll wait till the end for you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Sarris, yes, their numbers have increased on their intake by 165 more dogs in 2024 than in 2023, and it was less 106 euthanases. So, I feel if we didn't speak out, they would have continued doing what they continue doing. Because they have been exposed, they know we're watching, and I feel like I am saving dogs' lives by letting them know, we know. So, they can't no longer get away with what they're doing. Amy, in a meeting I had with another volunteer and a couple, a couple of their staff members, she told me that she personally is the one to decide who will be euthanized or not. And just so you know, she does teach euthanasia courses, and I don't know how that is taught, but I can only imagine. And also, the one gal, that's Linda Lester, she invited me to apply to be on their board, because she's saying they are looking for other board members. So, I'm not interested, but just to let the public know, if you want to be on their board, she said to fill out the application, so all you animal lovers, please go ahead. And that's all I have to say, that, thank you. I know you're considering another shelter, we desperately need it, because with the housing growing and people coming in, it's only more animals. And the reason other rescues have been so busy is because people are afraid to bring their animal to the shelter, and I understand why, and that's all I have to say. Thank you all for your help.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Gina Wise, Quail Hollow, I have to say, as an RN, I taught hospice. It's important to teach euthanasia, and I could, I can understand Amy teaching that. It's very, it's a very important issue. Also, I have been to this shelter a number of times, unannounced, I don't call up people and tell them, "Oh, look, I'm coming." Every time I went there, which they didn't mention, there's a gentleman there named Graham, tall gentleman, he's always out in the, in the field, they have like a gated field, teaching, training dogs, okay? They, he puts them, he categorizes them in packs. So, one pack, I stood there for hours watching him. It was incredible, it was almost like he was inside the dog's mind. He, and then he trains the staff along with the dogs. I've actually seen this, I was so impressed, I'd never seen anything like it before. He also takes the dogs to the Good Times Dog Bar every Saturday or Sunday, and he puts in adoption, and he makes them, you know, he'll take four or five of them, and he'll put like an adoption little jacket on them. And he, you know, they really, really, I feel, I know there's a lot of issues, I understand that you should and have to, you know, iron out, but you have to sometimes give credit with credit is due to some people for the dedication, for the work that they do. And I just wanted to come up here and tell you that every time I've been there, I see the workers, dogs walking, catching, you know, taking other dogs out, putting them back. The people work there very hard. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Excuse me, Caroline Johnson again. I just wanted to clarify for the number of purposes, for any amount of years I've been doing the Lost Pet Page before starting SMART, I started SMART I started SMART two and a half years ago, but prior to that, I volunteered at the Humane Society for probably seven or eight years doing their outreach events. I also, running the Lost Pet Page for eight years, I've reunited most dogs that I find, unless they're dumped, or there's an owner that doesn't want them, you can't reunite those. I have microchip scanners, I have volunteers that have microchip scanners. If we find dogs, I have not taken a dog to the Humane Society since I stopped volunteering there two and a half years ago. I stopped volunteering because of numerous issues that I had with the organization and some of the staff. There are times where they do great work, I won't debate that, every organization does, but you can't deny the, the issues that are there. 2024, we took in a hundred and twenty-two dogs. We do dogs only, we don't do cats. We took in a hundred and twenty-two dogs from the Flagler County community, between Benel, Flagler Beach, most of them being in Palm Coast. All of them, we put into foster homes before getting them adopted. We do all of their vet care. Our vet care is done, all of it, at East Coast Animal Hospital, unless we have an emergency after hours, then we use whatever ER we can get to that's nearest. But a hundred and twenty-two dogs doesn't include the lost pets on the Lost Pet Page that I've reunited. The lost pets, I go hang up flyers in the area, I'll hang up signs in an area where an animal is found, with the hopes of reuniting them. I do not take a stray dog to the Humane Society at all. I find fosters, and I find people that will house those dogs until we can find an owner. Many of them, if they don't have a chip, we are able to reunite. Just the efforts, again, as in my volunteer time, I hang up signs in the area, I post on social media, I communicate with City of Palm Coast Animal Control to try to look for licensing. So there is a big effort on our part to reunite animals. So that probably does help out with the numbers, not completely as far as numbers, but I think taking a hundred and twenty-two dogs that were adopted in our community, and probably another seventy or eighty that were reunited, that were lost, that roughly two-hundred number definitely saved on money that they would have spent, and, and, and helps critically with dogs that need it. The hundred and twenty-two dogs that we got adopted, ninety-eight percent of those were critical cases. Every single one of them cost us somewhere between a thousand and five thousand dollars of vet care. I have all of those records, where we have paid every dollar of that. East Coast Animal Hospital would ever, would always come in here and vouch for that, they have all of our vet care and bills there. So just some clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Okay, I feel much better now. My name is Nick DeSantis, also known as the Dog Father. You touched base on two very important things here in Flagler County that we lack, and that is vets. I've had people come to me saying, I can't get a vet appointment for six months. Okay, so we have the Humane Society, we can go to the Humane Society. It took seven months for my, my dog to get neutered. So this is real shortage of that now. Second one that's even just as bad is, if you have an emergency, and Lord knows, we have a lot of those. I'd rescue birds on the side of the road, turtles. I had to go either to St. Augustine and let them know ahead of time I was bringing in wildlife, because they have a special procedure to bring in the wildlife. Or I had to go to Daytona or Ormond. If I was a vet, the first place I would come to is Palm Coast, and open a twenty-four hour or open an after hour vet. I'd be a millionaire within a year. I kid you not. So there's another, there's another area we can explore. I, I don't know much more to say about this issue, but let's, let's look at that area. It's, it's a tough area. And again, ask anyone that's moved into this county, they can't get a vet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Ron Long, Auto Drive. Councilwoman Pottery is exactly right, we can't make Flagler Humane Society do anything. I think in the presentation, they mentioned that competition breeds excellence. Maybe it's time to stop putting all our eggs in one basket, but I think one thing to keep in mind, one of the slides that really stood out to me was the amount that's contributed from this county municipalities to it as compared to the efficient communities and municipalities. It was four and six times more than what this community contributes to the Humane Society. So keep in mind, if we do expand our basket, it's gonna cost money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. You can go ahead, your final comment.
Florida law reads nonprofits like the Humane Society that receives annually one million or more of citizen support or provides assistance to a government entity is required to have a yearly independent audit. The shelter, the shelter's own CPA, there does their tax returns, are not independent audits, as they say, as they state. And their CPA says on, on their paperwork online that he is only going by the figures that they gave him. It is not an audit. Florida nonprofits are required to have at least three directors. They must be a minimum of eighteen years of age and unrelated. Local Humane Society has six board members, four of which are married to each other. The law also reads that no person serving as the treasurer or CFO may serve concurrently as the president or board chair. They show no listed treasurer on their website. Who is that treasurer? The shelter, who takes care of the shelter and its monies? Who oversees that? The board has a fiduciary responsibility to the shelter, to the county and its monies, and anywhere, anything related to contracts. The shelter stated in August to having approximately eight, eight hundred thousand dollars. What is that figure now? Or expected through an estate? Have they gotten something from an attorney saying that they're gonna be coming into a large estate, money from a large estate? Do they have proper strategic written plan? I know our plans in Indian River County are about this thick, for a three to five and then on to ten-year plan. That's a strategic plan. They have, do they have a proper strategic plan to uptake their antiquated building with its many issues, and to include a self-contained quarantine area, which they do not? There are too small independent nonprofit resources in the county rescues that serve, that serve vet care and foster several hundred animals a year, including community cats. They do several hundred cats a year. So between SMART and Community Cats, where would all those animals have gone this past year? The local shelter is generally full. Without these two, two small nonprofits, where would these animals go? The shelter at capacity with minimal vet care occurring, they may have other vets. Their vet in residence is one day a week, and we can prove that there have been many animals coming in there that did not get vet care for several days. So where were these other vets? And do they plan to just make space, or do they plan to fix their veterinary problem and their employee problem with going forward? City of Palm Coast has a great animal control team. They do out and above what they need to do, and thank you very much, and you should honor them one day.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward, we'll come back to the dais. Any closing comments, city manager?
Yes, Mayor, just so that, for the record, there's been a couple of comments to clean up. We have highlighted the Flagler Humane Society on our social media. They were actually a beneficiary for Food Truck Tuesday last year, and we did a video with Amy, and we spotlighted Adopt a Dog Month. The Humane Society did not apply to be a beneficiary this year at Food Truck Tuesday, and SMART did, and so their month is on April. And there is a twenty-four hour vet clinic opening on State Route 100 adjacent to the Wawa.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Miller, did you have something to close out?
Yeah, so there was some commentary about not, the board's job not to interfere in day-to-day operations. I, I get that, but also, it came across as that oversight was not part of that mission. And I would submit that that's the primary mission of a board, is for oversight. If, while you can have trust with the, you know, the executive officer that's managing your organization, there should be oversight. And if you're just agreeing with everything that that person is saying, then what is the point of a board? You might as well just turn the entire organization over to that person and let them run it and then be the board and make unilateral decisions. So, so I push back on that. And then the other thing, Nick mentioned, you know, obviously with veterinarian care, that's an industry-wide problem, right? There's, there's not enough schools, there's not enough people coming out of, of these schools to, to provide the services that we require. But I know we've had educational partnerships in the past, right, with some of the, the healthcare schools. And so I wonder with UF being closed, if there, there might be a, an avenue to reach out and see if we could have maybe a training facility for clinicals or things like that here. You know, so that's something maybe I can, I can follow up on with that avenue. I know that typically in areas that have vet schools, the animal population is very healthy, because they're, they're churning through all that work to teach students how to properly care for animals. So I'll follow up with that, Nick.
Thank you.
So I actually, I wanted to be a vet when I was a kid. Maybe I'll do a career change and, it'll kill me to go to UF, I will tell you.
My, my sister is a vet, and then Mike Tajmer is actually my college roommate from University of Florida, so, so Mike does a lot of great work for the community as well, so just, just to reference that. But yeah, I have that in my family and friends very closely.
No, I think that's a great idea, and I, I thank you for taking the lead on that, looking into it more. So I do want to thank the Flagler Humane Society for a lot of good work. And Gina, you're right, a lot of good things have been overshadowed by what's been going on. So, and I, I, I don't want there to be this thought out there that there's nothing good that's been done by the Humane Society, because there is. And I mean, I've gone to a lot of their benefits, and like I said, I've adopted animals from there. That being said, I do, I do want us to move forward in this, in this way of looking at alternatives. Now, what I, what I want to give the Humane Society an opportunity for is, we have this presentation from ARF as the city liaison in conjunction with the board, which I know we have a few still in the crowd here. I will send to Amy this presentation, just so she has at the top of her email, but also questions to confirm a lot of the things that have been stated in this, so that we make sure we're working from a base of fact, because that's always what I want to work from, and then make decisions and try to work towards a solution from there. So I will get with her directly, and hopefully, I, I anticipate she'll get with the board. And then maybe at the next board meeting that I will be present at, we can talk about these facts and figures and truly compare what your data says to what this data that's been gathered says, again, so that we can work from that base of fact, and then I'll report back to this board after that.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Gabriel. This is a very sensitive subject in our community. I'm sure we can come to a compromise and, and make something positive happen, and there is a lot of money to help take care of animals in this county, and a lot of volunteers. So we can make it happen with cooperation through the county. We have, we have already discussed lands where we could put another facility. So we'll move forward there, and you're looking at April, right?
Yes, sir. My direction was to make sure we receive the answer back from the question that council member, council member Miller asked. Work with our county partners on a joint city-county meeting targeting April, and then understand what the worst-case scenario is if we are looking forward. So those are my, that's my direction, Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next presentation. It is the, the executive airport zoning regulations. That'll be presented by county, and we will be breaking for lunch at 1:30. How long are we gonna go for break, city manager?
That's up to the council. We could do fifteen, twenty minutes.
Say thirty minutes. Anybody good? Anybody got anything planned for today?
I mean, I gotta be out here by 3:30.
Okay. All right.
So, Mayor.
I'll start my second job whenever this gets started.
Mayor, city council, as per your request, we reached out to the county to get some more information.
Okay, hold it down, hold it down.
To get some additional information after the joint city-county workshop, or cities-county meeting that was held just recently. Mr. Mingle is here to present a presentation, and then immediately following that, your executive brief from, you know, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Blocker will present that to you, we're prepared to discuss that. So thank you, Mr. Mingle, for being here today, and I'll let you take it away.
Okay, we're gonna, what the city manager said, after this briefing from the county, we're gonna have a briefing as far as our, our legal recourse and stuff from the city as far as the airport is concerned. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Adam, Vice Mayor. Councilmember is Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director for Flagler County. And this presentation concerns the statutory requirements for airport zoning regulations. We will touch into some particularities related to the airspace, but for the most part, I'll be talking about the minimum requirements for the ordinance that we presented so far in draft form. And so if you've seen that already, we're still probably, safe to say, working on that model ordinance, gonna be developing that further. And so if anything, please take this as a, as an introduction of the topic, and, and provide it just in that spirit for you. Airport zoning requirements are found in Chapter 333 Florida statutes. These actually date back fairly far, back in, in the statutory history, back to 1945 is when the first airport-related zoning requirements came into the statutes. And the intent there is very clear to protect airspace, ensure public safety, and support compatible land uses around airport facilities. Primarily, what you're trying to do is protect your, your public investment in your general aviation airports that are throughout the state. It prevents obstructions, could interfere with safe aircraft operations, mitigates noise concerns, and promotes sustainable economic development. And if we comply with this, it's essential then for FAA funding eligibility, preserving the long-term viability of aviation infrastructure throughout the state. Think of this as a network of, of these airports, then providing that form of a transportation amenity, not unlike our roadway network, not unlike our port facilities. So why are the cities included here with this? City of Palm Coast and City of Benel, both are identified as being, as having portions of their boundaries in the airport hazard area. Then cities then, that have a portion of their boundaries, they're within an airport hazard area then, must comply with Chapter 333, and primarily to prevent the obstructions that could endanger aircraft operations, protect public safety, and ensure compatible land uses around those airports. Compliance helps municipalities maintain economic development opportunities tied to aviation. And so we do see it as an economic development tool, adopting airport zoning. This is a section, and so I do have to admit, if you had seen the, the advance on this, I added a few slides. These are all, anything that I've added have been related to items that are readily available on public record, and I will refer to those when I've, I've added those. This is an example of this. This is an excerpt from Chapter 333 Florida statutes. And I wanted to have this where you could have my statement bolstered by what's in the, the law itself. So 333-031A talks about the requirements, why we have to have this, part of our police power, talks about if, and B, if it's owned by another jurisdiction, in this case, the county, then why the cities, the cities have to do it because you, you have this, this relationship that's there because of the Part 77 airspace that goes over those other jurisdictions adjoining the airport. And then, and then B1 talks about, we can do this through interlocal agreement, adopting this set of airport protection zoning regulations. We would adopt by ordinance is the theory, and then we'd have the cities, both Benel and City of Palm Coast, come in and adopt through an interlocal agreement, that cooperative nature for us to, to have effectively this set of tools for their, for our community. Or alternatively, we could create a joint airport protection zoning board. Staff had met on this dating back every bit to 2017, and, and at our level, we had come back and said the joint zoning board didn't seem to be very, a very good choice. It seemed like it would be adding more bureaucracy to this. Certainly, we can still talk about that, we can still consider that, but we were opting towards interlocal agreement. And that's where you'll see our ordinance heading towards, at least our process heading towards that, that framework. So Part C here talks about the minimum requirements that you have for airport zoning regulations. A permit for the construction or alteration of any obstruction, obstruction marking and lighting for obstructions, and then documentation showing compliance with the federal requirement for notification of proposed construction or alteration of structures, and a valid aeronautical study submitted by each person applying for a permit. Then the final one, their criteria, consideration of the criteria when determining whether to issue or deny a permit. Last part, FAA sole determination, if FAA requirements are met, that that doesn't necessarily mean that the proposed structure is not an airport hazard. And so in that mix that you have going on, we get all the way through this, just because we come back through that permitting process, doesn't mean that what's being put up into that airspace does not constitute a hazard under the FAA. This one, I'm not gonna read it in, in full, but 333-06 in Florida statutes. This one, I'm not gonna read it in, in full, but 333-06 in Florida statutes has these, uh, additional requirements and just the headings here I think are useful for us. The airport zoning requirements have to be, uh, have some qualification, uh, for reasonableness. Independent justification, nonconforming uses must be addressed. And then the adoption of airport master plan and notice to affected local governments is part of what we have, uh, that's built into the, the airport zoning requirements. Final note, uh, there was, uh, some discussion and, and we've had these over the years about these, this particular requirement and what's prompted this, this time for me to come before you and for us also to then to have a draft, uh, presented to our Board of County Commissioners. Uh, most, most recently in 2023, we had provided a copy of a draft ordinance to the FDOT Aviation Office for their review and comment. They had not provided that, that comment back to us and then as part of a grant that we had applied for at, at our airport, uh, that's using FDOT aviation monies, uh, there was a statement, uh, as part of the backup within that grant packet that said that, uh, we attest as part of this grant that we have airport zoning in place. And, and we, we have not. We've talked about it over the years, we've had some measures and you'll see that in just a moment, which I think arguably is airport zoning, uh, and you'll see that in just a moment. Uh, but, uh, we haven't had that formal airport zoning adopted. Requirement in the statute was, we should have done it by July 1st, 2017. You can see that last part, if you didn't do it, we're not alone, uh, then what you have is the, uh, Department FDOT administering the permitting process as provided in Section 333.025. What we've done all, all along is we have obstructions to airspace that are permitted would be those primarily cell towers that are happening. And what happens then is those go through an FAA permitting process through FDOT and, and those are appropriately permitted in the airspace. And, and that's what we've been working with so far, uh, with the lack of airport zoning locally. Give you an idea of what our, our airport looks like itself, this is an airport diagram, probably more familiar to those folks who are, are aviators, uh, and pilots. And so what this, what this shows to us, and the important part here is that it gives you an, a feeling of the, of the airside, uh, the, the physical attributes to the airport itself that constitute the, the zones that are then established, the, the surfaces, the, the next part of what I'll be talking about, uh, is dependent on these. And so that, that this shows the, the runway configurations, uh, the, uh, the, the hardscape to your airport, if you will. And so that runway 1129, the primary runway, fifty-five hundred linear feet in length, a hundred feet wide with a thirty-three foot elevation. And so remember, this has an elevation characteristic to it and typically over that ground elevation is established at your airport. So then we're going upwards from there. So everything not based on zero on mean sea level, but it's based on a thirty-three feet at the, at the elevation of the airport itself and then we're going up from there. The crosswind runway identified as 624, uh, five thousand and one feet in length, uh, by a hundred feet wide and then thirty feet, uh, field elevation on, on that particular runway. And there's also a seaplane runway, uh, that many folks don't know about that we have, uh, designated as eighteen W slash, uh, thirty-six W and that's, uh, three thousand and one feet, uh, in length and then five hundred feet wide with a twenty-two foot elevation.
Sir, and that's in the lake behind, uh, can you go back one slide?
Yes, sir, I'll go back. That's it, uh, right, right here, it's gonna be, uh, Gore, Gore Lake.
Yeah, the lake behind, uh, I guess west of, uh, runway twenty-four, okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And that, uh, many folks may remember that was a good fishing lake, not anymore, it's now fenced. And so we've, we've actually done, uh, I think there were some problems with some landings happening with some fishing boats being in that, but I'll, I'll let others talk about that if they have that as their experience. This is from the section chart published by FAA. What I wanted to show you here more than anything else is that, uh, each of these have, have meaning, I, I won't even attempt to, uh, the symbology here with this, uh, but it does have the elevation, I don't know if you can see, can't see my cursor, but it does have the elevation, uh, the ground elevation thirty-three. Uh, and then if you look to that kind of, uh, top left of that darker circle that's surrounding this, uh, as an example, you see a notation that's, uh, it's in italics, twelve forty-eight, uh, that's the tower at Espinola that, uh, we were talking about. Uh, I'm always making it taller than what it is, but it is a guide tower, it's one thousand two hundred and forty-eight feet in height, uh, and that's, uh, that's above mean sea level twelve hundred and four feet above ground level. And so at, at that location, and so as an example of the airspace that you have, and that'll become important because you'll see on later graphics that we have, uh, that approach area is coming in from that side, coming in from that Espinola direction, coming in basically from the northwest and so you'll see that in just a moment also. Uh, but this gives you an idea of what we have, uh, within the permitted, uh, permitted obstructions within the airspace are, are basically each of these symbols that are here that are the, the kind of the triangles, uh, and those typically are gonna be your, your cell towers. A good statement here to make that City of Palm Coast, I think for your reference, you know this, uh, your cell towers for the most part are restricted at a hundred and fifty feet. And so that's gonna be an important number that we'll come back with too, where, uh, if you're under a hundred and fifty feet, there really isn't a whole lot that we have to, to deal with within this framework. When we talk about surfaces in these different zones, here's what they look like in a, in a graphic. This is taken from the guidance that comes from FDOT Aviation, uh, from the FDOT Aviation Office. And so that, uh, and I'll get into each one of these in very brief detail, but the first and probably the, uh, most, uh, lowest consideration in the height is this horizontal surface, uh, that's shown. And so you'll see that in its relationship, how it extends outward from the ends of the runways, runway being that primary surface that's shown. This gray here in this graphic showing the horizontal surface, you've got some idea of the height that's there, uh, with, with this. And then beyond that conical surface and how it curves upwards and then further back and, and in a outward direction from each end of the runway is this approach surface. And then with that approach surface then having its own sloped area called a transitional surface. With that, I've, I've probably said just about all I could be able to muster on what that means other than what the Code of Federal Regulations provides under Part 77. And this is where we get our guidance for how we've depicted these. Uh, I won't read these, uh, into the record, but these are part of your packet and this is taken directly from that Part 77 to give you an idea of, of, of the extent of these, uh, surfaces. And these together form, uh, the, the zone that we have, the, the area, the, the map series that'll be part of this. I thought about, uh, adding this in and this is an additional slide than what you had seen before and so kudos, I think, are, are due. Uh, when I, uh, talked to your staff yesterday, we had a, a quick meeting and talked about this presentation and other matters that we're working on. And, uh, I was reminded of this effort, July 2009, remember the date that I said about 2017? I think we were doing zoning before zoning was cool on airports. This document is, is almost directly related to the use of your air, the, the, your land uses around the airport. And so this was the Palm Coast Flagler County Airport Area Master Plan, July 2009. Uh, you have this in your document history. And, uh, the city received an award for this, uh, we jointly participated in it and, uh, it, it, it had something that you'll see, uh, that very much looks like this then, 2009, and you'll see in a moment, this is what, uh, very much you had already seen is, as far as what we're talking about adopting now. Approach surface off to the west, remember my tower that I mentioned? Uh, it's, it's kind of, uh, roughly about halfway through, maybe two-thirds of the way through that approach surface. So you've got that twelve hundred foot tower to deal with if you're, if you're coming in on that, uh, that main runway, the primary runway. Uh, and, and it just gives you an idea of, of how that looks, uh, graphically superimposed over, uh, the, the, the bulk of, of the, of both Palm Coast and the county. And so the, the land areas, uh, you can see, uh, Banel, uh, proper just to the west outside of what was identified as the, uh, the horizontal surface, that orange area here. And then you have that, that, uh, second orange line that's there and that's the conical, uh, surface beyond transitional surfaces being the, the, uh, the lime green that are here. And then this is the detail also from that same 2009, uh, plan, uh, that showed, uh, how that looked on the airport area itself. Uh, this was in, important for us because this showed the confines of the, of the airport and in some degree, uh, is a foreshadowing of not only a primary surface, but then also what our noise, uh, survey, uh, study would look like, uh, as well. Much of what you'll see is related in the model ordinance to, uh, coordination and, and so I also looked then, and this is also a new slide. Uh, this was something that, uh, we didn't talk directly about, but we had done this in 2017. This was related to the guard facility coming in, uh, south of the airport. And we had adopted an interlocal agreement. It has a lot of language in there about utility provision, but it was also a, a very good, uh, tool for us in controlling how lands developed around our airport. And so this interlocal agreement beyond utilities had this framework that came into play where we had formalized through the interlocal, a, a, a cooperative review for development that's occurring within this area surrounding our airport. And I, I think, I can't speak for city staff, I think we've been very successful in, in following this interlocal and tracking development and protecting the airport in very much, uh, the same way as you would expect through an airport zoning regulation. And, and to give you an idea of the geography that was part of this, when, when we had this come in, so at the north end, you have Moody Boulevard, State Road 100, on the east side, Seminole Woods Boulevard, it was our, our boundary, Iroquois Canal to the south, and then we did have that little bump out for the, the, uh, guard reserve parcel that's there. Also, uh, note for the record, there was a three-acre piece that's, uh, adjoining, uh, has frontage on Belt Air Boulevard that is designated for a city park and that was conveyed to the city, it's three acres and change. And then you have that boundary then on the, on the west side of this being Belt Air Boulevard. And so within this area, that's where we've had this cooperative relationship. Mentioned a few of the projects that we've had that have, uh, gone through this and through that FAA obstruction review, uh, Tractor Supply being the first one that comes to mind, that when they, they did their, uh, work with a, with a crane, they had to go through FAA permitting for a temporary incursion into the airspace. Uh, when we had BJ's come in with their tilt-up construction, also again, a crane that was involved with that, uh, that they had to go in for a, a, what ended up having issued, uh, as a temporary notice to airmen, that there was a, a, a crane that was within the airspace, temporary fashion. Again, these are not permanent obstructions, they still had to go through an FAA, uh, permitting process. Uh, two more quick examples, uh, replacing the air conditioners on top of the hospital, had to go through this as well. Again, a crane that was involved, temporary incursion. And then the cell tower at the high school, uh, that's right behind, uh, FPC bleachers here that you, you see coming, coming and going. The tower itself, I believe, is below the one fifty, it doesn't show up on any of the charts, uh, but we had, uh, a permitted, uh, a replacement of some of the equipment on that. Again, a, a crane that was used and so you had the temporary notice that came out, FAA permitting that was required. Much of what we have in the model ordinance is based on this document and this is a fairly recent, uh, uh, iteration of this. This is a 2024 edition that, uh, when we had our, our, uh, all intents and purposes, we were gonna go forward with our 2023 ordinance that we had sent to the Aviation Office and never got a review. And so this, uh, guidebook, uh, is, is the basis of our ordinance and what we put together. And in that, there is a model ordinance that's in the text, uh, the, uh, from the Aviation Office, they put this out, uh, and then the result of that and what we did in our review is what you see here with our, our zones. It's very much similar to what the city had and the county had proposed previously in 2009. Graphics a little different as far as its coloring, but it's the same information. Down in the inset to the right-hand side, you can see the detail, uh, for our noise contours and I'll go into, uh, you'll see a, a better slide with that blown up and then with also within the primary areas on each of the runway ends on, on that graphic. Uh, but what this shows is, uh, the, the intent in the model ordinance is to adopt, uh, two separate, what they define in the model as airport zones of influence. This first one is based on these combined zones altogether and this will form what's known as the airport height notification zone, within which anything that's, that's approaching the height limits of each of these separate zones would then go through a notification process and a permitting process potentially through FAA. The second zone that would be established would be called the airport overflight zone and, uh, the overflight zone is, is basically limited to the area immediately around the airport itself. Uh, that's the airport protection, uh, zone, uh, for the runways themselves and the noise contours. That, uh, airport height notification zone, uh, regulates the height of structures and trees and what the FAA defines as objects of natural growth, uh, that are beneath these zones. And so that once you go above the level, then, then you're, then you're getting into a permitting, uh, process through FAA. First of these is that horizontal zone, this is the one that extends outward, uh, a hundred and fifty feet and so that, uh, a hundred and fifty feet elevation outwards for five thousand, uh, horizontal feet outwards, uh, from the airport itself. And this, uh, each of these zones are based on the current airport master plan, the current layout of our runways. I need to make sure I, I say that as well for the record. Our conical zone is a, a twenty-to-one slope or five percent and that extends outward from the, uh, the area of your horizontal zone and then extends outward to nine thousand uh, feet beyond that. And, and if my math serves me correctly, uh, that height then at the tip of the conical zone is somewhere around about three hundred and fifty feet. The next one that comes in is, uh, your, your primary, and that's mainly limited to just those areas on the, on the airport boundary itself. And so you can see those here outlined in red and those are, are those, uh, that, uh, are, are, uh, basically at a zero elevation with these. Approach zones, uh, are at a thirty-four-to-one slope or three percent slope and they extend outward from the airport itself as we, as we show, uh, here. And that, uh, depending on how the, the, uh, their, your layout is, is concerned, if whether or not you're an instrument runway or, or a, uh, airport will determine, uh, the length of these approach zones. And so presently, uh, I think our airport director, uh, Roy Seager, had, had commented to our, our board in our workshop on February 10th, the current approach zone you see extending out westward will, will be reduced significantly with the next iteration of the, uh, of the, of the airport master plan because, uh, that, I think this has a precision, uh, runway, uh, characteristic to it and we will not have that precision approach. The precision approach, if I'm quoting it correctly, uh, requires a, a elongated approach zone, uh, when it, when you remove that, it's, it's, it's shortened. And I neglected to mention at the outward end of that approach zone, again, I believe that, that at, at ten thousand feet, that height at that end should be somewhere at around three hundred feet as well. And then this transitional area is, is sloped, it's the greatest of the slopes, it's on each side of the approach zone. It, uh, it's at a seven-to-one or fourteen, fourteen-point-three percent, uh, slope and, uh, on each side of that, uh, approach zone. And then that one, if my math serves me well, can be as high as seven hundred feet with that, that, uh, that aspect to it and, and you can see where those extend outward. I put this in even though none of what we mentioned had a hundred and, hundred-to-one, uh, but this was part of the, the model, uh, guidance that was, uh, from FDOT. And so this graphic, I think, helps us in, in understanding what these zones show. And so if you can look at that tower, uh, that's, that's there between that range of five thousand to ten thousand feet distance away from the runway and then where that height zone comes in, if it breaks that height zone, then the noticed FAA is required. Then we're going through some permitting process. The tower that's right around the twenty thousand foot level, notice that it doesn't break that height limitation and so it says noticed FAA is not required. And so, uh, the important consideration here is that it's got that, that element that's there, uh, the, the important consideration for us to remember is that the, the, where you have these zones overlap, the lowest height zone is the one that applies. Again, most cases it's gonna be your, your horizontal, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty feet. You know, I think that we're gonna have very few obstructions into that, uh, that even, especially with, uh, the city's, uh, restriction on the, on the hundred and fifty foot height limitation on your cell towers. Another excerpt from the statute and, uh, and this one, uh, I think was important because this is the, the precursor, we had the airport height notification zone, that mix of those, the, the conical, the horizontal, that's our airport height notification zone. These next to the runway protection zone itself and the airport noise zone form the second area, uh, that's, that's mentioned in this, in the model ordinance, the airport overflight zone. And, and this is intended where air operations readily occur at low altitudes. And then this is the one that has the restriction on the residential, educational and landfill operations. So if you have any one of those within these areas, uh, within either the runway protections or airport noise zone, then you're into the, into the realm of talking about nonconformities. Uh, I think you'll see that we don't have those within the, the boundaries. Uh, I put this in here because I had an earlier slide and I think others had said that it was confusing. I had presented it to our board, uh, because it was in that second part of sub-part D that you see there, uh, within an area contiguous to the airport measuring one-half the length of longest runway on either side of it and at the end of each runway center line. If you don't have a noise study, you've got to do that as your boundary and that becomes your de facto limitation for where you cannot have within that boundary, res- uh, residential or educational facilities. If they're there, they're nonconforming, you shouldn't have new ones within that boundary. We have a noise study, we didn't have the, the Part 150 noise study, but if you look at the, the part above, it's C. You, you have either the noise study and it's an extremely expensive endeavor, it's a long, uh, endeavor to do the FAA Part 150 noise study, then that second part, or when a public use airport owner has established noise contours pursuant to another public study accepted by the FAA. And that's what we have. And so, uh, this gives you the idea of what that first part, the runway protection zone looks like. You can see a bit of incursions there on its northeast corner, uh, that, uh, at the very You can see a bit of incursions there on its northeast corner, that at the very top, that's the BJ's parcel that has a wetland conservation easement over it, and then on that far east boundary, I think that's a private parcel, I don't think there's any uses, but these, these yellow areas also fall under navigation easements, and so that those are specialized easements that have been placed since 1940s on the airport. At the south end, you can see that the incursion that would go off of the airport boundary in gray goes into a parcel, that's the county parcel, it's actually a stormwater pond that it goes over at the guard site. And so that gives you an idea of where the runway protection zones fall in, and then this was that noise study that I talked about. In October 2009, we had an environmental assessment that was done for shifting our primary runway southward and lengthening it, and as a result of that, this was the noise contour that came up with, out of that, it was accepted by FAA. This is in lieu of that subpart D language that I mentioned, this is our noise limit. So confusion on the part of the public somewhat, when I presented that, it was something that our board had asked for before, and they were contending at the time that we had not had a noise study done. Staff was saying that we did have this noise study, this is an accepted FAA noise study, this is the noise study that applies to the airport presently, and this is our limit as a result of that, when we put it into the graphic, showing in gray the limits of the airport itself, and then with that kind of purple fuchsia color then showing the airport contour. Important thing to note here is that FAA recognizes that a 65 DNL limit is what's established, it's known as a day night limit, is the limit on objectionable noise. If you're going above that for residential purposes, then you're considered to be objectionable, and then certainly less is better. But the 65 DNL limit is what's shown here, and then if you're above that, then you're objectionable to residential development.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So the study you said is 2009, so I guess my question is, is there any statutory requirement for, or code of federal regulations requirement for the frequency of that study? Or 2009 seems kind of a long time ago, and potentially, there's been changes in opera, significant changes in operations that would change the output of that noise.
One thing that I did note, and your timing's perfect, because I was going to mention this, is that when they do that environmental assessment, one of the assumptions they make, especially when it involves elongation, making your airport, your runways longer, is what would be the largest plane flying at the time that would be able to be accommodated on that runway? And certainly, you know, I think your comment's good, one of the things I read about prepping for this is that, you know, we expect technology to change, that things are going to get quieter, things are going to get more efficient as time goes on, that would be the hope, but then, you know, I think there's an implication, there would be some need for studies that would be done in the future, but the quick answer is, as part of that 2009 environmental assessment, we built into that, and as part of what they published, is that the largest planes that would be accommodated here is Bombardier, Global Express, hopefully I pronounced that first part right, I'm not a French major, and then, or the Gulfstream, what's known as a G5, or I think more recently now, they have the Gulfstream 550, it's also known as the G5 SP, and so those are private jets, that would be the largest aircraft that we would have accommodated here, so that, they mentioned in closing, that on your, to your question, the FAA noise study in, at part 150 study is determined when FAA tells you you need to do it. And then often, what's happening with that is that there's funding that's involved with that to make that happen, it is a very large endeavor, and it takes years to get through that process, and very thorough, and so that something, our update to the master plan won't necessarily require an update to that noise study, but we have, as a result of some of the noise complaints that came into us, we've contacted FAA, and FAA has told us that it's not time for it yet, that they haven't seen a change in the makeup of our airspace of the aircraft that are coming in that would warrant that noise study.
I guess my question is, related to the tempo of operation, so to speak?
Yes.
Because this criteria is, or this data point is an average, right?
Yes, it is.
So, okay, we're taking into account that what the largest plane is, so the loudest plane, right? But the frequency, did we take that into account, right? So did that change enough over time so that, you know, maybe 100 planes per day we're landing, these are just, I'm throwing these numbers out, but, and now it's 500, so that average would then be five times, if you extrapolate that, right, five times that amount? So just because it's a louder plane doesn't make it an average, so to speak?
And I think, and I could defer to Mr. Seeger back at the back of the room, but I think it's still safe to say that Gulfstream activity, that this size of jet that we have are still very infrequent. And so that I think it's still, where we're looking at the average, you know, we're still seeing more of the single engine aircraft, the private aircraft, general aviation that versus the larger.
Maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding the, so if we're talking about average, are we talking about the average of the sound of a specific plane, or are we talking about the average sound at that location?
Yeah, average sound at that location based on, based on the, I believe it's based on the activity that happens at that airport. And so you've got a component that's based on, if you had all Gulfstreams that were there, then you'd have a different contour that would be drawn, and that when this was drawn, best I'm aware, is that this was drawn based on the activity, primarily your Cessnas and your things like that, so that, I think you do have an average noise level, that I think you're hitting on it right, it's based on the operations you have. If you had more jet activity and it was louder, then it would be a justification, I think, for doing a new noise study.
That's what my question is, is if you have double, let's not even talk about the Gulfstream, let's talk about Cessnas. If we have double the Cessnas flying, your average is going to double, right?
I don't think that works that way, I think, I think your noise level would stay the same there, because it's based on the, it's an average noise level on your, Cessnas at the quiet end, your Gulfstream's at the loud end.
Right, but the alternative, when a plane is not flying, is no noise, right?
Right.
So you have no noise, every five minutes you have a Cessna, no noise, five minutes Cessna, right? So that's your average, you're averaging that out over time, now you have Cessna every two and a half minutes and no noise in between, the average sound then would double, right?
I'm not sure if that's how it works, again, I'm not the expert on this, so that, I would think that.
I'm just trying to understand.
Sure, sure.
If something was studied in 2009, and then we're adding tempo to those operations, logic would say that the average sound produced by those planes, if we're going up, should go up as well.
I remember the CAP facility being built here, and so I'm not sure if our operations had really increased, I know that I can look to Mr. Seeger, I suppose, to talk about that.
Understood.
Sorry, since we stopped, I'd like to continue on with his line of questioning, because from what I understand, your explanation is, it's more based on the type of aircraft rather than the frequency.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so.
Because you've.
Since 2009, which is what this data is based on, right?
Right, yes, ma'am.
Have the runways been extended?
Yes, they have.
Okay, why did we not do another contour study when that was done?
This study was based on that extension, and so what you had the 2008, let me go back to the slide, that you see the reference here to proposed alternative, and you notice, I can't point it out to you, but the pink line is shifted south of the runway that you see there, that interior line, that was based on the shifting and elongating of the runway. And so this, the purpose of this environmental assessment, this review was the extension of the runway and shifting southward.
Okay, so.
And so this is current.
Okay, so the contour study that is reflected in this is still pertinent to the airport as it currently stands?
It is.
Okay, now, it's my understanding that due to the changes that are coming up to be made to the airport, either this year or next year, another contour study will be required, right?
I don't think that that's required with the update to the master plan, because the actual layout of the airport itself, the runways, that will not be changed, that I know of.
Well, when Mr. Seeger was here, he told me that that would be happening.
Okay, if he said that, then I'll defer to what he said.
That's why, because I knew you said in your presentation something differently, so I want to make sure this is, this is important for our community, because while I understand what you're saying about the noise level quote unquote being not increasing because of the type of aircraft, we have seen an increase in the frequency, I mean, his own number, Mr. Seeger's own numbers ferret that out when we, when he was here last time, the numbers have increased. So the 65 decibel level, how is it that we take into account the frequency rather than just the type of aircraft?
Yeah, because I, that's above my pay grade, I'm not flying.
Good afternoon. My name is Roy Seeger, Director of the Flagler's Executive Airport. Adam did a great job in explaining all those airspaces, there's actually people that, that's all they do, so Adam, kudos to you for explaining all that. One thing Adam did say, you are correct, Councilmember Ponteira, is that we will be doing an update to our noise contours in the upcoming airport master plan.
Okay.
So that, we will be doing that. So and again, when we did it, when that, say we, I wasn't here then, I was in 2008 when they did that environmental assessment, and that was for the feasibility, basically, of extending that runway, and that's why that noise contour was done. So when they do a noise contour, what they do, they send people out, and they, for a period of time, they look at what type of traffic is coming to our airport, they look at the type aircraft, they look at, which is going to be a single engine aircraft, the multi-engine aircraft, jet aircraft, they take all that, and they put all that information into a model, and then it pushes out these contours, that's how that's done. Now, I will tell you, back in, so in 2010, and don't quote me exactly on these numbers to exact, but 2010, we had our, that was the first full year of operations that were actually counted with the air traffic control tower. In that time, we had around 175,000 to 180,000 operations. And since that time, the airport, the operations at the airport have ebbed and flowed during that timeframe. I think we've beat that twice, one was 180, one year was 182,000, and I believe last year, we did about 180,000 operations. And also, I just want to also clarify too, that line that you're talking about, that contour line, is not a decibel line, it is called a day night linear, and that's what they do, when they're looking at those contours, again, looking at what type of aircraft it is, single engine, multi-engine, jet aircraft, that's all put in there. But I will tell you, and the way they do that also, is that that's taken from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM in the morning, any aircraft flying that time, it's multiplied by 10.
So how does this, so you said the 65 dB is what, dB is, what does that stand for?
Decibel.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, but when you're looking at the noise contour, that's a DNL line, not a decibel line.
Okay, okay, so, all right, I just want to make sure I was understanding it correctly. So do the, does the amount of, what do you call them, operations?
Correct.
Okay, the amount of operations, does that play any role into the contour study?
I don't, I actually, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, and do we know when the contour study is going to occur?
I'm sorry?
Do we know when the contour study will occur?
So that will actually occur towards the end of the airport master plan.
But just to make sure, if I could, Vice Mayor, that it's not a part 150 study?
Correct, right, it is not a part 150.
No, I understand that, I'm just curious what the timing is like.
So the whole airport master plan process takes about 18 months, just that portion will be done at the end of the airport master plan.
Okay.
That's just the way it falls in.
So what are we anticipating?
Well, we're anticipating starting in June or July of 2025.
Okay, so a long time. Okay, thank you.
And also, I will, I also want to say too, once an airport master plan is done, it then goes to the FAA for final approval, and that, and that can take a while sometimes. I would say I've seen, it could take up to a year sometimes.
I'll have to call Sean Duffy. What's that? We'll have to call Sean Duffy.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Seeger, so just to be clear, so the definition of an operation, one is a landing, and then a takeoff is another operation, right?
Correct.
So if, let's say we've got a student pilot, he's flying around, touch and go, or whatever, those are all multiple?
Correct, that'd be two operations.
So if it's, you said 180,000 overall, so that would be, you know, half of those, you know, landing and half of those takeoff, just to conceptualize it for the public to understand.
Correct.
What that means, okay, and how it's broken down.
Is that, is that the most of the flights that occur out there is touch and go landings?
I would say, well, I would say probably, probably, you know, 65 to 70% probably is, and I know it's touch and go, sometimes the students do what they call, not just a touch and go, but it's also called a landing and then taxi back, so they'll land and then taxi back. And I, you know, and I know people say that touch and goes are dangerous, they're not dangerous, and actually, what a touch and go does, it actually allows, you think about it, an aircraft, so how, I don't understand how, and a touch and go could be dangerous, and it's any different than aircraft is landing, right? The aircraft is landing, it's rolling down the runway, you put the flaps back in, you put the power back in, you take back off. And so what's that's going to do to that aircraft, it's actually going to have, that aircraft will have more momentum, right? So it's going to have more momentum, so when that aircraft leaves the airport property, it's going to be much higher by doing the touch and go than it would be if it was just taking off from a dead standstill.
Mr. Seeger, are you a pilot?
I am a student pilot.
So you're not a pilot?
I'm a student pilot, and I have flown, I have flown, I've soloed, I've been around aviation for 40 years, so I know exactly, I've done many touch and goes in Cessna 150, and I learned to fly in a tail dragger, so yes, I do know how to fly.
What's the, what's the most dangerous time during aviation operations?
Takeoff and landing.
Roger that.
I have a question with.
You just said that, you just said, you just said quite.
No, I just said that, I just said touch and goes were not a dangerous operation.
But you just referred to it as, you just counter argued your argument.
I don't believe so, but thank you.
When is the tower manned?
I'm sorry?
When is the tower?
The tower's manned from 7, excuse me, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at night.
Okay, do we know what percentage of touch and goes are occurring when it's not manned?
So, I do not, I mean, we can look, we have a vert tower operation that we could look at to see how many operations we have. I will tell you that since we put into place, so you all know, we put in voluntary noise mitigation procedures, and since that timeframe, we've reduced a lot of the nighttime flying that's been happening at the airport.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, I just am curious, because I feel that there is a safety issue, if we're having touch and goes occur when the tower's not manned, because we don't have radar out there yet, right?
Oh, correct.
Okay, so, we don't have radar, we don't have a manned tower, we have touch and goes occurring, even though there's a voluntary policy in place, I understand, where we're trying to reduce the amount of touch and goes, I would like the number.
So, and really what they do, at nighttime, they don't do touch and goes, they don't do touch and goes at nighttime, at nighttime, the flight schools don't allow it, they actually do what they call a full stop taxi back.
Okay, whatever, I would like to know how many, and I appreciate the clarification, but I would like to know how many of those occur at night when the tower's not manned, just what percentage, because you have to, I know you're looking at this from the perspective of the airport director, we are looking that, at least I am, and I probably think my colleagues are as well, because we get the same emails, we're looking at this from a safety perspective and a quality of life perspective for our residents. And when we have, particularly right now, and I know the news is, whatever the news is, when there's one plane crash, and all of a sudden, there's 50 plane crashes, but there's a concern right now specifically about crashes, and we had one occur not far from here, just very recently, I think it was a little Cessna.
Caravan, such a caravan.
Yeah, so I would like to know how many of those operations are occurring when we, because we don't have radar, when that tower's not manned. I am, I am concerned about safety, even if it's a land and taxi back, I would still like to know what percentage of those are occurring.
Well, pretty much, most of those aircraft that are coming in at that timeframe, they're all going to be doing that, because they're not based here, right? So those aircraft, I would say almost probably 80 to 90% of those aircraft are doing the landing and taxi back to takeoff.
No, 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 my question is, how many out of total airport operations are occurring when the tower is not manned?
Oh, when it's not manned.
Yes, sir, if we can get that data, that would be helpful, please.
Mr. Seeger, how many county employees work at the airport?
We have eight.
Eight county employees, and you're the supervisor of all of them?
I'm sorry?
Are you the supervisor of all?
I'm the airport director, correct.
So you're their boss?
Correct.
Okay. All right, continue on, please.
And you have contracted employees as well, I would assume, or is it contracted employees, like folks that run the tower?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Right, so the, yeah, the air traffic control. Right. So, the, yeah, the air traffic controllers do not report to me.
Okay. So, oh-
Go ahead, Council, I've got something after you.
Okay. So, over to you. So, the objective of this presentation, I just want to make sure, I mean, these are all valid concerns that we've all heard from our citizens, but I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're asking. You're giving us information to inform us about a, a potential future inter-local agreement?
Yes, sir.
To, to help, to, to help sustain safety standards for aircraft landing and taking off on this airfield.
I would answer it differently, that it's, it's meeting the airport zoning requirements of Florida statutes that were established in twenty seventeen.
But the Florida statutes are based off of FAA regulations?
They are.
And Department of Transportation regulations. So, just, the, the purpose of this brief is really to, what we're discussing here is ensure that we conform for, for safe aviation operations.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, but just, we would just ask that, you know, as we move to the master plan and, and look at the decibel levels and things of that nature, just, you take that into consideration, because we, we certainly are getting, uh, in earful-
Understood.
-from our, from our residents on, on this issue. But we understand it's, it kind of flows downhill, right, from the FAA as we, as we move forward. Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Back to the number of touch-and-gos. And you said the majority of those are not students out of this airport?
Correct.
And what's the benefit to our community of letting that happen?
Well, for, I don't have the ability to tell that that cannot happen. We're a public-use airport. We cannot stop any legitimate aeronautical use. Now, touch-and-go is an aeronautical use. That'd be just like saying that we want to be able to stop tractor-trailers going down I-95. Can't do it. It's a public road.
But we can't regulate it?
We cannot.
We, can we charge them?
Well, that would be, that would be, that would be a question for the-
And I, say, if I wanted to charge every airplane that did a touch-and-go on our airport a hundred dollars a pop, could I do it?
No.
I couldn't do it?
You could not do it.
Could the county do it?
The county could implement landing fees, but they couldn't charge them at a hundred dollars.
Why not?
Because it's a, it's, it's a-
What's the going-
Too high of a number.
What's, what's the going, what's the going rate for touch-and-gos at other airports that are similarly configured?
I only know of maybe two airports, and just most, most recently, Kissimmee Airport put landing fees in place, and they were charging three dollars per thousand pounds. So, if it was a Cessna one seventy-two, they weigh about fifteen hundred pounds, you'd round it up, so it'd be six dollars for a landing.
If I may, Mayor, that's why I asked about the, the percentage when the tower's not manned, for safety purposes, because I think that if we have some legitimate safety concerns, those fees are reasonable. But if, you know, we need to, we need to make sure that there's, we need to check, we need to figure out what the safety concerns are, because we don't have radar, and because we know these types of flights are occurring without a manned tower.
Well, it's, uh, it's, it is a matter of quality of life. And I've been around airplanes my whole life. I'm, I'm, any paratroopers in here? Anybody jump out of airplanes? So, I, I've been around, I've been around aviation and stuff like this all the time. I, I was a jump master. I used to bring in jumps and, and heavy drop rig and all that stuff. So, this is a matter of quality of life for our community. And I don't know what we can do, but we need to do the best we can to, you know, ensure, like Ms., Ms. Shelley, she's going to stand up, and she's going to talk about lead levels. And she sent me paperwork that showed the, the level, the level of lead readings over the years, and they were exactly the same. I don't know how you can go exactly the same. Well, Ms. Shelley, was that every month or over the years? It's yearly?
They're allowed to do two years.
Years. So, you know, lead level like six point nine, six point nine, six point nine, six point nine. I don't know how a, a reading like that can be the same over that period of time.
I don't know where this information's coming from. Where's she getting the information from?
Well, we, she can explain it when she comes up later, because I'm sure she's going to have something to say.
Mayor, so legally, we cannot charge for touch-and-gos unless it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
So, so if there's a lead safety issue, if there's a safety issue because of an unmained tower, then that's something that the county can look further into.
Well, I, I, I don't agree at all with building a terminal at an airport before you ever have radar. So, this, and I'm assuming the intent is this airport's going to grow. Is that your intent, Mr. Seeger?
That is correct, Mayor. Let me go back to the radar issue. I will tell you, I've been the airport director here for sixteen years, and ever since we built that tower, we, I have requested radar all the time. I've even went as far as getting a congressional with Congressman Walts looking into it, and it still didn't happen. So, it's because it comes from a different pot of money. I'm very good at getting grants. And since I've been at the airport, rebuilt the airport, and got seventy-two million dollar worth of grants for that airport. If I could get money for radar, I would have done it, but the FAA won't allow it. Now, I will tell you, most recently, as of last year, they're, they are going to do away with the radars that are at these contract towers, which we are. And they're putting what they call situational awareness displays in there for all air traffic control towers, for the contract towers, for like ours. So, that's what we will be getting. But again, it's not for lack of not trying. I will tell you, and it's also, there's a lot of airports in the state of Florida that don't have radar. It happens all the time. People fly in uncontrolled airspace all the time.
What's, um, what's the largest aviation school in America?
I would probably say Emory-Riddle. Pretty big.
Compared to Emory-Riddle or Daytona Airport down there, the number of touch-and-go landings down there as opposed to ours?
I can't answer that question. I know, I can just tell you how many operations they do there, and they do close to four hundred thousand operations a year. It's almost double what we, what we do.
But that's almost double, that's an international airport.
International airport, but they don't have a lot of commercial flights daily. Maybe six or seven.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mingle, you can continue.
Yes, sir.
Unless we have anything else from the Council?
Yeah, I was just going to express my support for, you know, potentially navigating the safety risk with fees and kind of steering those operations to a less fee, prohibited timeframe, that is also more safe.
Well, like, in ours, you know, excluding you, Vice Mayor, it's not our fault, but we were, we're in the military. And, and even, you know, in, in your business, you have risk management. And this is all about risk management. And part of our risk management, there should be something inherent in there about public, about the public quality of life. And we don't worry about, in our operations, we didn't worry about, you know, you know, that kind of aspect. But in this one, in this one, we do. And I, I have been, like I said, I have been around airplanes and, and operations, you know, and this is quite serious. And we know what this is. We know why we are doing this whole process, because that money that Mr. Seeger got from the state, he is not going to be able to use that money until the, all these regulations are met. Correct, Mr. Mingle?
I, I don't think, if, we have, maybe I'll answer it this way, FAA correction, FDOT's regional office has replied back to us, saying that they're aware of us working on our airport zoning and that, uh, they're fine with us and the timing we're at. So, I, I believe they will continue with grant monies that have been previously allocated, with us staying with the time, timeframe of adopting airport zoning, I would say sometime this year. I, I think it's, it is something that needs to be done.
Well, this is, this is going back to two thousand seventeen. Here we are. This is twenty twenty-five, and we're going back to fix something that should have been done back in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, before all those houses were built out there adjacent.
Hold it down.
Hold it down. So, we're going back trying to fix something in our, our statutes and our ordinances that should have been done way back then. And it, the catalyst for the whole thing is about how the money's going to be allocated and distributed to the county, and what regulation is three-three-three, state statute, is that it? Triple-three? They, they must meet those requirements to obtain those funds, from my understanding. And the, the citizens are, are mostly concerned, because in some of the paperwork, and I have it, and to tell you the truth, I haven't, I get a lot of information on aviation that I wish I didn't have to deal with. These ladies back here, that, they should go and get aviation attorney degrees, as far as I'm concerned. But this is, this is, this is very serious for their, their quality of life down there. In a, in the event of a catastric, catastrophic event, these homeowners will not be able to rebuild. Is that correct, Mr. Mingle?
No, that's not correct. That's not true.
I didn't read that somewhere?
That is not true.
Okay. Well, well, let's, let's continue on. I'm sure we'll get to it.
Mr. Mayor, I've, I've got one other comment. I mean, since we're, we're having a discussion, it's nice to actually be able to talk to each other, but with, with Councilmember Miller's comment about, you know, he's open to fees as a mechanism to try to maybe deter landings or whatever the case may be. I, I think, how about we man the tower twenty-four-seven? You know, why can't we get, look into-
We?
No, well, not we, but having a discussion with the county about, you know, manning a tower twenty-four seven. So, from a safety perspective, right? If, if the, if the issue is that the, you know, the, the tower manning, the lack of tower manning equals greater safety concerns, you know, that's an option. And then, and then it'd be great to understand the, the, the timing on the radar. I mean, we, we didn't get a specific date or year, but that new, you know, common operating, you know, display for radar in conjunction with, um, um, the, you know, potential manning, twenty-four-hour manning, I think. So, I think there's kind of three courses of action that we could potentially have a discussion about with the county with regards to, if, if safety's really the issue. I don't, I don't know, noise complaint is an issue, but if safety's really the issue, manning twenty-four-seven and having a radar to be able to capture everything more efficiently that's coming in, in or out, I think it's something worth discussing. I'm not saying we have to do it all or any of it, but I mean, it's, it's, I think it's something to have a discussion going forward. And I think there's, you know, Roy and the team, I think there's, there's things that are works, but, you know, as we look at options, I think we should look at all the options. And for me, from an operational perspective, if you want to improve safety, and I, I saw this on Kandahar Airfield, if things weren't right, you know, when we had medevacs and, you know, soldiers in danger that were within that golden hour, we needed to have it manned twenty-four-seven. And so, we made those adjustments. And so, in any case, uh-
You finished, Council?
I am. All right, thanks.
Mr. Mingle, uh-
Yes, sir.
We have, we have come to, we have come to a, a place in time where the county airport is surrounded by my city. Has there been any, has there been any discussion about the airport being annexed into Palm Coast?
I, I think it has come up over the years. Uh, I, I can't point directly back to when that may have happened. I think that you probably need to have a willing landowner to make that happen. But certainly, we have discussions of enclaves, that an obvious one would be the airport in the middle of the city.
The, the landowner, the landowner is the county, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that may be a discussion we need to have.
If I, if I could point out a couple of things here about this, and certainly do appreciate the discussion, and also the comments we've had, we've received the same. I, I know that may be hard to imagine that I'm, I'm saying that, but I, I do appreciate the, the discussion about noise and those concerns. But the, the ordinance that we have, that we prepared is, is a land use ordinance. It's related to Chapter three thirty-three compliance. These last components here, to emphasize the part, Mayor, that you made the comment about, between the runway protection and the noise, so runway protection here, and then the noise contour here, those two zones together correspond to what's known in the ordinance as the airport overflight zone. That would be the area within which, if you were in one of those two, then that would be the area where you would have prohibited residential, educational facility, and landfill construction. So, those, those three activities are what's called out in the statute, those are prohibited. And you can see here from this, we've done a, a good job, in my opinion, of attempting to place both of those within the confines of the airport property itself. If you may recall that there was a industrial plat that was record, approved by the city off of Seminole Woods. After that plat was approved, we went through and, and had some discussions with the landowner, and it actually bought more land and, and included some other easements in order to, to put all of that area within the confines of the airport, so that we didn't have these conflicts.
So, I have a question then, because I think this gets to the heart of what my concerns are. Had this zoning ordinance been enacted in two thousand seventeen, how would that have affected the development around the airport as it sits today?
It would not have.
None?
Not at all. Not at all. This, this ordinance is related to obstructions into your airspace, and, and, and that's the, that's the limit. So, you have the one that's talking about height notification, and then the second part, the, we had at the time when this was, when the airport zoning was talked about, we had the two thousand nine noise study that was done. That noise, the, the noise map that you've seen, what you see here, has not changed. You know, I understand the comment, perhaps it's time to go back to that. I, I think the average would change if you had noisier planes, is what I'd come back with. I think averages are based on, on, if you have, frequency doesn't attribute, last time I remember my math, doesn't, doesn't talk about average. If the, if you have the same, Cessnas are all you have, but you have more Cessnas, your average noise is going to stay the same. But I, I do agree where you're heading. I, I, I think there's a component there, that if we have more of these noisier planes that are in the, in the operations, then I think it's fair to say that it, it's good to look at that, and, and it's good to hear that we're doing it as part of the master plan update.
I have a, a further question. Sorry.
No, no.
Um, so, we're talking about this overflight zone, right?
Yes, sir.
And prohibited building within that, right? And currently, it's confined within the airport property. So, a future study happens, that sixty-five decibel line moves out, now it's on private property.
That, that possibility-
How does that affect our residents?
That, that possibility is there, and, and, and so very, very real. And then, if you had a change in the layout also, to go back to that earlier graphic, so the consideration there, the, the what-if, you know, it comes into part of the county's planning, but I think that's, that's very real. If you were talking about a six thousand, uh, a linear-foot runway, or, or some change in those operations, either the runway protection or the, or the noise contour map would, would, would change that, arguably would make it extend outward across those boundaries. Uh, the ordinance, the draft ordinance now talks about what you, how you handle non-conformities. Uh, that does mention, I, I think it's got in there some sixty percent, I think, if your structure's damaged within those areas, and so that comes into play. It's in the model ordinance. Uh, we don't have that to worry about now, but it, it could be a possibility as a result of a master plan update.
I mean, if, if the intent of airport operations are to grow-
Yeah.
Uh, then-
It makes sense.
We, at some point, we will have that problem, whether it's five years or twenty years.
Yes, sir.
Um, I guess the, you know, the main thing is, one, we, we talk about quality of life, right? But two, um, if I was being a purely selfish city councilman and protecting my tax revenue, it's also going to affect the property values of homes, but that aligns with my residents, right? Because they want their property values to go up as well, and certainly not to go down. So, I guess my concern is that we're affecting our residents in that way, that their property values are going down, it's affecting our revenue in terms of tax revenue, and then also equally important quality of life, right? So, those are my, those are my concerns with how this is going to kind of affect our residents that are adjacent to the airport.
Mr. Mingle, why was this not done back in two thousand seventeen?
We, we had a lot of discussions, I think, just priorities. It's, it's all a matter of what can we devote resources to? And, and I, I can't give you a reason, staff, we had meetings all, all along, probably with the ebb and flow of time, that we, we would put time into it, and then we'd, we'd advance something, and then, and it would fall by the wayside. And so, that's the best answer I could provide to you.
Not a great one.
It's not a great one, no, ma'am.
What's the, what's, oh, I'm going, I'm going to-
No, sorry. I, I want to piggyback on what Councilman Miller was pointing out, which is very important. So, airport expands, the radiuses that we're talking about expand, which then would have a direct impact on some of the residents in this interlocal agreement that you're presumably going to be presenting to us, right? We have to get an interlocal agreement based on this?
Uh, yes, ma'am. The ordinance first, interlocal to follow. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will you all take responsibility financially for if, if something does happen to where our residents are now looking to file suit? Are you going to indemnify the city? Because the county should, it's a county airport. And, and in my opinion, if this should have been done back in two thousand seventeen, which it should have been, that would have directly, should have directly affected our development plans. Um, we developed based on, again, I'm presuming, but this wasn't in place. Now, you want to put it on us so that you can get grant money, because we know that that grant money can be clawed back if, if this isn't done. And now, our residents could be impacted, and the city could be financially on the hook for that. So, will the county indemnify us?
This may not be the best timing, but I, I did bring this along, because I thought this question may come up. So, in two thousand and five, before two thousand seventeen, obviously, but give you an example- So in 2005, before 2017, obviously, but give you an example, and, and certainly all know better, the platted lands that are both in the U section, I think, off of Seminole Woods, and then the Z section, those already have been platted, those were part of ITT. But the developments to the south were not part of the ITT lots. Those were county properties. And to give an example, Cascades, very, very recent topic of discussion. The 2005 iteration of that development agreement, 2005-21, subpart E, had a notification requirement that was built into the county's approval of the PUD that mainly said, developers shall comply with FAA regulations applicable to the development of the property, including FAA Form 7400-1. Developer will also provide disclosure to all potential purchases of grand landings property of the prior existence of the airport, as well as including such notice with covenants, conditions, and restrictions applicable to the property. We did the same for the grand landings development in, in 2005 also, when we approved that ordinance. I don't know if those restrictions survived when it was annexed into the city, so I, I can't answer that, but we thought when we had control of those lands that were not previously platted, that we had provided sufficient controls within our agreements, our PUDs, our land use approvals that would have had that notice provided to those landowners.
Okay. So, and this is part of my frustration with why I feel like this is now being rushed when this, this is, has the potential to be a pretty big deal for our community if the airport does expand. Because essentially, you all have the ability to expand, we, the city of Palm Coast has no say in that. You all have the ability to, and to enact this ordinance, city has no say in that, but our residents could be potentially affected by it. So what I'm trying to figure out is, it, should we even be expanding the airport if we're going, if there's a potential that we'll be financially on the hook for anything in the future? If those requirements were done, does that absolve us? All of these questions are now kind of rising to the surface that we didn't know about before, and I don't have any answers to them, and I don't feel comfortable with them, and I, I don't know if anybody else does, I don't know if our council does. And I've, I've been hearing conflicting things, I've read conflicting things, so I will not advise entering into any interlocal agreement, and so we have very exact answers to all of these questions. And I don't, I'm not talking about the now, I'm talking about the future, to Councilman Miller's point.
If I may, Councilmember Pottery, to your point, so in the future, if like we do these, these noise contour studies, and then the airport does expand in the future, and these noise contours do go off airport property, at that time, then the airport would be able to do a Part 150 noise study. And when it's a Part 150 noise study, FAA looks into it and says, okay, this noise is affecting this, this, and that. And that's when they can get into require, either buying homes or, or soundproofing homes, things of that nature. That's what, that's what happens when you do a, a Part 150 noise study.
No, I appreciate that, but that's not really my concern in this part of the discussion. My concern in this part of the discussion is the protection overlay zones, because right now you've got horizontal, conical, all of these different zones that may not encompass homes as we speak, but once we expand, it may. And from my reading, based on these overlay zones, there are limitations with regards to what can occur in them. So, so even though currently there may not be limitations based on the, the zones, when expansion occurs, those radiuses will expand, and so then we could have changes that could affect what people can do on their private property. That's my concern. So we need answers to what our plan is, if and, I guess when that happens, because there is an intent to expand. What's the plan to make sure that legally our city is not paying a ton of money for lawsuits?
Cause through no action.
I think, I think if.
No action of our own, that's exactly right.
If, if I could dovetail off of, the, the, the most restrictive of these are these two zones. And so again, and this is identified in our ordinance as the airport overflight zone. These are those two areas, both the runway protection and then the noise, and, and certainly, I think your comments are right on, on point with those, is that if, if the operations, if the layout of the airport changes, then those intuitively are going to, are going to change.
So can you go, can you go back to that with the yellow protection zone, please?
Sure, I sure can.
Okay. So what is the largest aircraft that can be put down on either one of those runways right now? The largest aircraft?
Gulfstream.
Gulfstream?
Yes, sir.
The G5?
Yes, sir.
C-130 can land on.
I don't know about it.
Football field.
They're ready for that airport.
C-130 can land on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you, it, it stands to reason that any expansion and, of the airport is gonna expand those, those runways into those zones that you have highlighted right there. You have to extend, you know, like linear feet. So it's gonna increase. If, if this airport grows, it's gonna push it out, those contour lines and everything out into our community. One follow-up question real quick. How would we go about, if the city were to annex in the airport, how would we go about changing the classification of the airport so we wouldn't have to have all those touch and go landings? What, like, we're general aviation, right?
Yes, sir.
What would have to change for us to say, hey, you're not doing touch and goes here anymore?
I, I don't know if a, of anything you could do locally other than FAA controls the air operations, right? So it's, I, I, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Mayor. I don't know.
There's really only three types of airports. You have a private airport, like you see at Leeward Air Ranch, or, or right down the road, Spruce Creek, where, where a general aviation airport, and then the other would be a commercial service airport.
St. Augustine Airport, what kind of airport is it?
Which one?
St. Augustine.
It's a, well, I don't know, it kind of ebbs and flows. Sometimes it's commercial service, sometimes it's, they have, it actually has commercial service there. So there, there were commercial service, then they go back to general, general aviation. Right now, they're just general aviation.
So.
But they have an 8,000-foot runway, that's why they have the commercial service.
So that's longer than ours?
Absolutely. Our longest runway is 5,500 feet. I just want to say one more thing, and this is all great conversation, but when you look at those yellow trapezoids up there, it was just there. So those are the RPZs, the runway protection zone?
That's support.
So, so the long one going east and west, that's, that's the longest runway, primary 5,500 feet. So you see the, like I said, the yellow trapezoids, that's the RPZ. So the FAA, the FAA says that you cannot have the runway protection zone, anything in it. So if you look at that, that can not even really touch, it's almost to an extent. So I don't ever think that the, that the airport will ever be able to extend it past where we're at, maybe to 6,000 feet, which is only another really 250 feet either side right now. So wouldn't extend that RPZ that much, but it would not extend it as much to going across Seminole Woods, because that's not allowed.
But not the, so understood. So you're saying the, the limitation of this prevents a huge expansion of the runway, which would then ultimately affect the sound, the lines for the sound overlay?
Right. So then those lines would move too, because you're extending the runway.
Right. But what you're saying is this yellow trapezoid can't go out onto private property.
Correct. Correct. Absolutely.
And so that would limit how much you can extend the, the flight line, and then because of that extension being limited, the noise change would not be that great.
Correct.
To then extend into private property.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. It's not like that, it's not like that RPZ could go across Seminole Woods and into the housing area. Can't happen.
Quick, quick follow. Are you finished, Councilman Miller?
Yeah. I realize I wasn't talking into the mic, so I wasn't sure how well anybody could hear me.
I'm just babbling on here. So St. Augustine is a general aviation airport, but they do not have the touch and goes that we have.
I can't speak to that. I, I don't, I.
Well, you can look at it. I'm, I'm sure Ms. Shelley can pull up the flight and show that they don't have those, those turns going around the airport over there and touching.
I'd be really surprised that they didn't have that up there, because they're, they're basically like, I was actually starting to say earlier, but, you know, Florida's a mecca of aviation. I mean, it's, it has beautiful weather to go fly in, there's lots of flight schools, and those flight schools, it's just, this is not an issue that is just dedicated to Flagler County. We see this in Orange Beach, we see this in New Smyrna, we see this in Titusville, we see it in much, in much other, a lot of other airports as well.
Okay.
I have a question about your next couple of slides, because you have a by-the-numbers slides where.
Yes, ma'am.
We've got parcels listed.
Bring us on. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So when it says this is a total parcels within these zones, do you have these broken up by horizontal, conical?
I can. Yeah, they, it's in a spreadsheet, and so we, we can give you, we can give you that, ma'am.
If you could, yeah, because I didn't, I didn't see that. But what is the implication? I mean, why list these? What, what's the importance?
Well, I, I think this and also then the population was, was something that I think that spoke to the, the public comments we, we both, both elected bodies have received. And so that, you know, the, the, again, in the context of, of the, of the horizontal, conical, that kind of, of language, we're really talking about height restrictions, what we're talking about there. Again, 150 being your, your upwards limit. And then if you're talking about then your, your noise and your, your RPZ, you know, those being specific to the prohibition on, on your residential, educational facilities and landfill construction. So those being a different, you have a different characteristic with those. I, I wanted to have this in there because I, I thought it was important as a decision-maker that at least you would, you would be able to see what is included as far as a parcel count underneath those, those particular surfaces. To me, the, the greatest one, it, of, of all those, of the greatest concern, the lowest one, is involved is that horizontal. So that with that at 150, and I think you're going to see that that's going to have the greatest population density, it's the largest of the, of the zones. It's also the one that's, that's more concentrated around the airport itself.
Right. And so I agree with you. So with the horizontal zone and the 150, what does that mean for a regular homeowner? Because this is what.
Not a thing.
Why? Why does it not mean?
Because, because a regular homeowner's not going to build at 151 feet.
Okay.
And so if, if they wish to, I mean, I, I don't know, I think your zoning is, because it's, it was our zoning before, I think it tops out at 35. We talked about ham radio operators. Ham radio operators can continue to do what they're doing, they're not going to have 150-foot, 151-foot tower, but for the most part, 150 is your, is your, in the horizontal, 150-foot is your limit. And so that for the homeowner, it's, it's not going to do, it's not going to have any effect on them at all.
What about multifamily implications?
If, if you did have a, a 151-foot construction or above, if you had that, then, then yes, there would be a, a consideration that's there.
So staff, this, I don't know if this, the property we were just talking about that we voted on last week, the.
Flagler, Flagler Pines.
Flagler Pines, thank you. Is that a concern based on this information?
And I could probably answer that for you also then, that it doesn't mean that you can't construct it, you would just have to go through an FAA permitting process, Flagler Pines being a, a good example of that, based on that graphic that I showed you previously. And remember, we had a multifamily construction that was happening with this, that's permitted. We have multifamily that's on the Flagler Pines property. We went through this discussion at the county commission level. This graphic came into play with that, and, and it's adjacent to it, but it, the Flagler Pines property is outside of the noise contour, outside of the protection zones, and so it is permitted, new residential construction. It would have to go through an FAA process if it was over 150 feet in height, but it could be permitted. Remember, there's a, also a cell tower, the Monopine that we have that's next to the airport. And so that, that was a similar process, it was permitted close to the, the airport itself, but it, I, I think that may answer it. I didn't mean to speak for your staff, I apologize.
Yeah, I would like to hear from Jason on that one, but then also, commercial implications? So commercial development, what are those implications for these zones?
I can cover both of those.
Please.
For, in, under standard zoning, MFR 1 has a maximum height of 50 feet, MFR 2 has a maximum height of 60 feet, and for commercial zoning, our max is 100 feet in Com 2, Office 2, PSP, and MPD.
Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I could touch in?
Jason, don't go anywhere. Along those same lines, if we want, right here in the town center, right here, if we want to, if we want to allow, say for instance, a hotel, say, what's the highest hotel in Palm Coast? How many stories?
Well, the, the Hilton Garden Inn is in the town center.
Okay.
And I don't know the height of it, but I believe.
How many stories?
Three, four, five.
It's only three stories?
No, it's taller than three stories. It's probably like five or six.
So, so any, anything we're dealing with here, say if we wanted to put, say, a 10-story Hilton here, could we do it? In the town center, right here in this, the big quad right here, it's like right across the street.
I, we would have to review the MPD guidelines, or, I'm sorry, the Town Center DRI guidelines. There's, there's a height limit in it. I'm not sure what it is off the top of my head, but then also, I remember what, with, what Mr. Mingle said is that you would then apply for a permit.
FFA, an FAA.
Yeah. So it's, it would be two steps. One, would it be allowed under the agreement? If so, then two, you'd have to apply for a permit and see if it would be approved.
Okay. Thank you. How much longer you got, Mr. Mingle?
I'm, I'm basically done. I was going to, I was going to respond very quickly that, think about, I like where you're heading, commercial development, I think the biggest impact that you see is its construction. And so that when those temporary incursions happen, just permitting, making sure that those are, are taken care of in the airspace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I just have one more question for Jason. The Cascades, is that the, the, the desired multifamily? Would that be affected by any of this?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the map. I think it's further south.